All right, I'm ten minutes away. Your headache just goes away.
Yeah. There was a, there's a lot of people there today. This is what we got. This is what they want to see. And then when I look at it, everyone's just out. And...
All right, good evening, everyone. Call and order council meeting for City of Fulton. Roll call, please, Tori.
Mayor Malone.
Here.
Oliverson Boongstra.
Here.
Bergeret.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mask. Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sewell. Ben Campbell.
Here.
Wilkin.
Here.
All right, everyone, join me in pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have some presentations tonight. First, Rebecca here. Talk about the Christmas walk.
So, taking off my city attorney hat from my, I'm also the chair of the Christmas Walk Committee. So, we had our first meeting last month. And we can let you know that the date for this year's walk will be Friday, December 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., that's the Hilton Walk. Heritage Canyon, they do their own event following day. In the past, we have not done themes, but we decided to do one this year for a very specific reason. And that is that we lost a member of our committee this year because, most, probably just about everybody in the room, Neil Neil Luker, he was a member of our committee. Who, of course, was the thespian teacher at the high school for many, many, many years. So, we decided to honor the man by honoring something his love and using atheical themes. So, the theme will be All the Girls on Stage. And I will be sending out, Mass emailed all the businesses this week, letting them know that that's what we're going to be doing. And invite all of them to find a way to incorporate the theme into what they do. If there are any questions.
Pretty good.
Okay, thank you. Next is Tammy and Barrett here. Several. Oh, no, whoever would like to speak, it's okay.
Barrett Wernge, Tammy Wernge. I'm proposing to start another business at 2001 Ninth Street, which is actually in the original Business Park that Fulton started to get going thirty years ago. It never, you know, maybe got some business in there, myself being one, with the truck repair business since ninety-eight. The Phoenix Building, we actually purchased that. They got the opportunity, it's a corner lot. I don't know if you're familiar with the Phoenix Building. It was originally, many years ago, Gateway Marble. It consists of two large buildings. One's probably seven thousand foot. Heated. And air-conditioned. Well, I, I, let me take that back. It's all heated and insulated. They had an office area in there, a thousand square foot. Also air-conditioned. And that, we've already remodeled. That's where I'm proposing to, I'm asking, I guess I'm requesting this liquor license because we wanted to put in the Illinois gaming machines, open it up to that. Well, they require you have a liquor license. It's simplistic one, yes, help airwine. Like I said, the building's already owned. I did have done a lot of reconditioning to the property in general. I think it looks much better than it has in the years past. I'm getting old. I'm trying to find a little easier avenue of producing some income in the next following years. I mean, to be honest, that's the idea behind it. They said, we already own the property. It's already, with, I've redone the inside office area, remodeled it. It's our, it has separations from inside those rooms, set up pretty nicely with the glass windows and doors, French doors, to where the gaming machines would be in the back, in the small bar, bar area in, in the front. And also a large bathroom in there. Ceiling's been done, the floors, the lighting. I know at this time, I'm told, the license that I'm asking for is not available. I can't get it. I do have a question as far as, because basically, I'm, I got a lot of area to work with. And I'm open to, if I get, I don't know what other, I don't know enough about it as far as like what other licenses may be available. If it's matter of adding some pool tables, dartboards, virtual golf. I'm open to making other improvements to the property itself. Very open.
Okay. Yeah, right now, well, thank, thank you. Right now, we, yeah, we don't have a license to give away. If, if we, we would have to vote to add another one and then decide where it would go. But I do appreciate you coming out today. I took some notes. I wouldn't mind seeing the building. If you have time, you know, next week or this week or something, I'll definitely drive by anyway. But we will take it under consideration and probably discuss next week or at our next council meeting, if we're going to add another one or not. You can vote on that.
And, and I guess, I just wanted to be in, because I'm not sure how that goes, you know? It changes eventually, obviously, over time.
Yeah.
I wanted to get in the mix or whatever, because I'm concerned if we are denied.
Have you spoke with Renee, our liquor commissioner yet?
What?
Have you spoke with Renee Grant, our liquor commissioner yet, at all?
No.
So, she has an office at City Hall. It might be worth your time to make an call down there, make an appointment with her, and she could go in.
I need to step closer.
Oh, sorry. So, Renee Grant is our liquor commissioner.
Actually, no, I didn't talk to Renee. Now that I'm here, what you're asking, that's better.
Okay. Yes, she would be able to fill you in on all the different licenses and what is available and what is needed in order to have each one of those. So, I'd suggest making an appointment with her and having a sit-down with her. And she can go into detail what you exactly need in your business to qualify for those. And she can tell you which ones are available or not available and the process that you would need to go through for one to become available.
Naturally, that's what I'm requesting, I guess.
Hi, that's right.
I'm glad I stepped forward so I could hear.
We just rewrote our liquor license ordinance this past year. She is the most educated person on it. So, that would be the best person to talk to.
So, I've been in that building. I know the office area you're talking about. So, you just redid that. So, the rest of the shop building in the back, what are you doing with that?
Well, that's, well, currently, well, I've cleaned that up a lot too and redid the walls around it, were just torn up.
Yeah, they did a lot of process back there.
All that's been redone as well. Lots of cleaning. Currently, what I'm using, I mean, I've got some personal vehicles in there. And then I also have, well, there's separate building, the three thousand foot uninsulated building, I forgot the other, but the other one that, I have some, what do I want to say, parts for my truck business that are a high-volume mover or larger, just to get, keep things tidy at the truck business. I keep them over there.
Just in the storage.
Yeah. But, yeah, right now, I'm trying to do something with it because, well, I thought it was a very good investment. I still do. Had the opportunity to buy it, did. But I'd like to see, I need to do something to start getting, seeing some returns instead of just all outgoing. And we don't need another empty building or non-operating business in that business park.
Well, that's why we were thinking about the virtual golf and things, maybe even things that kids can do around here.
And this.
Just, and not have to go over to Fulton or whatever, it's a good size.
Would there be any zoning issues with that down there?
Industrial.
So, that may have limitations on what you can put in there as well, the zoning.
Well, I guess definitely some business, but there's, you're saying there's other.
It's industrial, they said, so I.
Which?
Industrial and business.
Yep, so you, anything that you could do in the business district, you can do in the industrial part. So, you, you are able to do a lot more with the industrial zoning.
I did want to share something else. It's under, well, it's kind of related, that long-term goal, what I'd like, is that large grass lot. It's big. I see in my mind, eventually, I want to pave that. I've already actually looked into it. It's, it's insanely expensive. That's, that's really surprised me. But I just, I ain't give up on the idea. But I'd like to pave that whole area and eventually, it's more, I'm fifty-eight, this is more of a retirement idea, but it goes on my brain. I want to create a motorcycle riders' training course there of various degrees. Like, from the little guys starting out on electric balance bikes to seasoned riders that want to improve to the, they call it a pro-rider courses. But I'll see that being real financially returning. That's just more, it feel good to, to teach everybody, but it's not a, probably a good business move. But just to share what I got in my brain.
What about the go-kart course? You see those in every tourist town, those are released during the summer months.
Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next here, we have Ari and Matt. Are you guys speaking together, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same, it's my.
Oh, okay.
Any chance I can present? Small movies? Yes. All right, thank you very much. I am here because I want to present to the city council an opportunity to partner with Clinton and the community of Clinton in a common goal. And it is to bring tourists, tourists and visitors to our area. In Clinton, we have a goal to bring sixty thousand visitors in the, in a span of time of six months. But we think we can improve that if we join forces with Fulton and we can bring one hundred and twenty thousand visitors, so double that in the same amount of time. And to do that, I, or the proposal is to put our region and our greater, our great river, ah, region, maybe I'm moving too much, is to put them on a troll map. And it's that troll map you were seeing there. Because it's artist Thomas Demble, who is the artist that is recycling, sorry. This is a, an artist that uses trash and recycles materials to build monumental sculptures and is a tourism magnet. So, what we want is to put Clinton, Iowa, and then Fulton into the troll map. There's so many people that are doing this travel as a road trip to visit these sculptures. And this is just the sculptures that he has on the U.S., but he's an internationally recognized artist. He has one hundred and fifty-one installations around the world. So, we would love to be one of them. These are the sculptures that he builds. We chose to present these three to you because they correlate to us. The one in the bottom is Benny the Bare Beard Fisher. He is installed in Michigan. And he has had forty-three point seven thousand visitors in two years since he was installed. Then I have, in Wisconsin, Mama Rosa. She came to life in May of twenty twenty-five. And until the end of June, it had thirty-six point two thousand visitors. And then I'm bringing you stats of the longest-standing troll that Thomas Demble has in the United States. It's the one that is public. Some of these are gated behind like arboretums or you have to pay to enter the park. But this Isaac is public. That's how we want our installation to be in Clinton. This guy has brought sixty-one point three thousand visitors in the last year, but in the span of his life, it's almost three hundred thousand total visitors. And this guy's, is a treasure hunt. So, these people are coming in, they want to take their picture. We have stats from all of this. They stay in a town and just visiting that area, they, they have geofence, which means that they tag and digitally, they pin your phone if you stay by. It's a lingering time, depending on the sculpture, is between thirteen and twenty-five minutes that a family of a party or a party comes in and hangs out by a troll. For now, we're going to have, excuse me.
Clinton, you can't approach without like.
For now, we're going to have two installations, these are coming to Clinton. Sawmill Museum and the Bicklehop Arboretum are spearheading this effort. And we're partnering, partnering with our community because so many visitors needs city, needs council, needs Kiwanis Rotary, you name it, LDPA Downtown, I, it's, time is short for doing that. So, it will be exponential if we add another installation across the river and we keep people traveling in our community. Because we are tied on this together, we're, we're sideways towns. And imagine if now they're just don't come for one day because there's only two sculptures to watch, but they come for a day, a full day, an overnight stay because they can't find the third troll. Or because they just found out there's market music or it's happy, or your Tuesday event. Or there happens to be the rain acting that you guys do at the,
Heritage Canyon.
Heritage Canyon, thank you very much. If people that come, they are not our community, but from outside, if they come and spend their dollars here, we have a huge economic impact right there. So, for that, sorry about that. I lost. My ask is that, not just from city council, but from the Fulton community, that we can get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring this artist to Fulton. This will be in front of the council members, there's a budget for Fulton community. And, but I want to show you and zoom in into what we're doing. The idea is that if we invest one million dollars as a community, we can bring an exponential gain into our economic development efforts. Because it will take us, our goal is to have one hundred and twenty thousand guests. But to recoup one million dollar investments, we need fifty thousand guests. That's it. And from, thanks to economic development money and Iowa, the state of Iowa numbers, we know that it will take us around fifty thousand guests to put back into our communities one million dollars in that we invested. So, right now, our budget is, our budget sits at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we want to be, we know we can do more. For that, we are, we have stakeholders in Clinton, obviously Sawmill and Arboretum spearheading this effort. And then we're going down from there. We're working on these partnerships, same will be for you, for you and Fulton. It will be to us, the county, it will be to us, the state of Illinois. Because this moves a lot of money. That gives me like five minutes. If we together do this, this will be the budget that we will have for the project. And we're giving ourselves six months to recoup that investment and probably gain some more. I have more samples, I have more numbers, I have more data. But I want to open it to questions and see what can I answer.
You have this money, like, in phases going out?
Yes.
Is that?
Faces, it's, the faces are the way kind of that the money goes out, so we get five payments.
Okay.
These are for artist fees, so the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars includes some money for construction time, which will last around six weeks. But the artist fee is the biggest chunk of the budget. And with the artist, for him to know that we're serious, he requests fifty percent down and then we can break it in payments. And they're very flexible to work with because, yes, he's an artist and makes a lot of money doing this, but he also wants to tell his story and connect with communities. So, there's flexibility in payments.
Hi, I'm Barb France, and I, I was at the first meeting of this, and I'm very encouraged with all this. There are definitely tourism dollars out there. I gave Sue the other day the names of your, your, two, the state senator and state rep that we definitely would want to get a hold of, see what kind of dollars are available statewide for the tourism. I've talked to Eric Sorensen, who's agreed to come and speak with us on several different things. I talked to him on the phone again yesterday, and so I'm going to get him here. We'll have, we'll talk about that after, not this meeting, but this is a super-duper idea for tourism because it's something totally unique. And I can't imagine that we can't tap into county board dollars. Fulton is part of the county as well, and they've got a lot of dollars there, and certainly I think they would chip in. We've got lots of different groups and organizations that may host a bake sale or do whatever they can do to start everybody, I want this to be a complete citywide thing with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, jumping on the bandwagon, doing all these little things to be their part of bringing that troll to this community. It could wake up the whole community on one project. And so, it is something seriously to consider. And if they're going to have two across the river, we would be a shoe-in right here. And we all rely on each other anyway. Fulton can't live without Clinton, with grocery stores, pharmacies, everything else. But again, they love to come to Fulton. And with the one at the Sawmill, immediately, they're going to be looking across the river and they're going to see that beautiful big windmill and they're going to say, I wonder what that is over there. It's already a great drawing card. But I really honestly think this can't be just dumped on the city and say, we got to have seven hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred thousand for the one we want. It's got to be a citywide thing. But I think with backing from the city, saying that, we're saying, let's all get involved, let's get in there, let's do this. We got Key Club that could get money raised, doing projects, there's lots of ways. And I'm willing to jump in and help them. But, but I really think a commitment from the council is going to be needed to even step anywhere more ahead. And what day is he coming here?
He's coming mid-August. We don't know exactly when because tickets and that, but it's mid-August. He will come to the site visit by then. I have a project timeline that I want to share with you. But we hope, and if he, this is why, this is why I'm jumping, jumping ahead in your agenda today because we need to have a contract signed for a third installation before the end of this month so that the site visit in August happens, including Fulton. And that way, we will stay on track for what we originally had in February of twenty twenty-five, which was to deliver by first of June of twenty-six. So that we can take advantage of that tourist season, the nice weather, and then we go from there. But to stay on track for that, we will need to know. And it's not like having all the money, but at least have a commitment, they're willing to sit with us, they have a team manager that is awesome to talk to. And we can just say, yes, Fulton is in, and have a point of contact.
Now, we would need, let's say, to do one like the Sawmill's doing, we'd need about a two hundred thousand dollar down payment, correct? If you do.
So, what we have quoted is more what the arboretum has, which is around the two fifty. The Sawmill at four hundred thousand has a couple of extra little added perks. And obviously, like everything in life, the more money you have, the larger it can be, or the other perks. To let you know, there's a couple of other ancillary locations that we might be able to tap into with our four hundred thousand dollars. But yeah, with the arboretum and like what you see in some of the examples that Ari showed, are that two to three hundred thousand dollar range that, for the installation.
So, the budget that I presented is for a medium-sized troll is what they call. And then the three hundred and fifty thousand is for the big troll.
And also, this will be Illinois's only trolls. I don't, I think Ari might have mentioned that, but they're, they're looking to be in one state basically only, so get all fifty states.
I just also want to say that this will be buying into a marketing campaign. I'm a marketer, I do marketing for Citizens First Bank. This is, this is a bomb. All you have to do is put something out there with that and it explodes. And it's wonderful. But not only that, but we get information. This is stats from Benny the Beer Fisher, so one of our guys in Michigan. And we get all of this data from the artist. And we can say, oh, who are we attracting? It turns out, we get to see demographics, and the people that are coming to see these trolls are young families. I believe that, I mean, Clinton's goal is to attract young families, I'm pretty sure we're close on that. And then the, the, the capacity of purchase, the term escapes my mind, but they, their salary ranges between fifty thousand and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and it goes like that. I can't, if anybody wants to dive deep into this, I'll be happy to see. But, and we get visitors over time. The longest-standing troll, Isaac Hartstone, who brought two hundred and ninety-one thousand total visitors since it has been standing, it got more popular the last two years because people are starting to make it up. So, the more we get, that's why it's, the more we get, I believe that we can have one of, one big installation. The biggest one there is, is in Minnesota, and it's thirteen trolls. Those guys brought over a million visitors during the time that this got installed.
Thirteen in Minnesota, thirteen just in Minnesota. 13 in Minnesota, 13 just in Minnesota alone.
Just in the, the South Lakes, the South Lakes.
Yep.
13 trolls around the lake, 1 million visitors and can be traced.
We fell in love with Detroit Lakes.
Detroit Lakes is a town like.
It's the United States. I think there's 30 or 40, 30 or 40.
No, what trolls? Well, they call, for instance, the, the installation at the, at the Chicago Arboretum was one, but there were seven things. So one was the troll, like the major troll, then one was the camp of the troll. So the kids could climb on like the pots and like interact with the thing. So this is solid structures, this is not, you're, you can touch it. No, this is made to last, this is, this is built. And then kids could come out of one, oh, I have a sample here that Matt, if you would help me.
Yes.
Because this shows how diverse the installations can be. So that Minnesota installation is counted as one, but it's huge. So we will be counted as two states. But it's like the story will be tied because we have a store, the history that connects us, which is the lumber history, which is the Sawmill Museum's mission, which is what got me into all of this. Which is the lumber history that keeps us, the, the lumber barons and the awesome houses that we've built. All of that is going to connect into one story.
So there is one in Chi, you said Chicago Arboretum?
The Mortimer Arboretum had it for two years. Usually they install things for one year, but this was such a hit that they extended it for another years, another year. That's another point to note. That installation, the Mortimer Arboretum decided to burn it. The artist, he told me he was, he's like, that's why I have now a contract that gives 10 years lease, which, don't get me wrong, we will get it for 10 years and it's not cost to renew. But to him, these are his, his, his babies, right? And then he wants to make sure that they're okay. All we have to do is upkeep them, which is, you know, wood, so it's outside, we gotta spray them with something and that's it. And then one, if, if it gets damaged, we assess with them what we can do. For now, no records of damage on any of his 152 installations. So that's a, that's good. But the idea is that in 10 years, we can renew this and just say, we're in for another 10 years. Or he can say, okay, I'll take the pieces and go because you guys want to build something else. But that gives us some flexibility to both parties, I, I think.
One of the reasons we joined into the contract right away before having like financials all the way committed at this, on the Sawmill side, is Ari alluded to, they're very flexible. So worst case scenario, let's say that you have 150,000 from a local community and you're waiting on that federal grant and we have to extend timelines or there has to be like, hey, can you wait a year or two? When we sat down with Danbo, that's what kind of separated him from a lot of different things was his willingness to say, hey, I'm in it with you guys as well to try to make it happen. He came here for like a, a meet and greet and different things. But he understands the public funding portion, so he's there to work and be flexible. And that allowed us kind of the, the confidence to say, you know what, screw it, let's just sign it. Let's see what happens, the money will come.
I had a question.
So if we do one now, can we add one two years from now?
Yeah, you could say, no, I'm not joining now and do your own later. Here's the thing, for this project, there's some fees for building and it's for hosting. He comes with eight people in his staff because some of his, the troll features are done in Denmark. So you're going to see there, there's shipping fees and stuff because the faces and the hands are done there. But then the body and the build and everything is with our own materials. But then we have to house those people, we gotta feed them, we gotta transport them, we gotta paint their airplanes. So right now, the Arboretum and the Sawmill, we're splitting that tab in half. If you guys join, it will be a third of the cost than if you then go ahead and do it, let's say, five years from now. But yeah, absolutely.
I was sitting in the Aquanis meeting last week and got to meet Ari, so I invited her to come. Because I thought this was a really great opportunity for this to be at Fulton. And I think anytime there's an opportunity where you can bring people into your community, like we should listen in, that should really get our attention, right? But there's actual numbers and data backing this, showing the return on your investment.
This is the age group of people that visit, the longest standing troll that I mentioned. And so young families and then here is the income. All of that comes for every troll. And let's say that the numbers are not important, what matters is the essence. This guy creates stories from his trolls. His trolls are a whole thing, they're an army of trolls, so we will be part of that. He makes books, social media, video. I mean, it's a marketing gold.
I thought that was really neat that, um, go on Facebook tonight and type in.
Thomas Danbo.
And, I mean, there's all kinds of different Facebook groups and people are literally tracking these. It's a huge scavenger hunt that like people are invested in and doing. And then the stories that he created with it, it's like this whole little cult of people that are like invested in too.
We also have some books at the Sawmill Museum. If you're curious, stop by, we have our director right there and he's, he'll be happy to have a little exhibit just to tell you more, I could go on and on, I don't want to take your time. But thank you so much for opening your time for me, if there's no more questions.
I, I do want to point out with these Facebook pages, I've, I've been monitoring these Facebook pages a lot to see what people are saying as they're traveling. And a, and a lot of posts are families communicating with each other based on, I visited the trolls, or I'm, I'm going to this troll, where do you want to eat? Where are you going to stay? What are we going to do in the area? So people are planning their trips, connecting with each other to plan their trips around the area. So as somebody who's trying to get people to our installations in Clinton and wanting people to be in the gateway area, I think that's a, a huge draw for, for us on how we get people into our area.
And on the last sheet is a PDF and this is done, this is an economic impact calculator that's done through Iowa Travel Industry Partners. It's based off an international economic calculator. And this is about 120,000 tourists will bring an economic impact to our community, which is based on Iowa's cost of living in Illinois, like this region. So it's like, you're basically $17 million in total impact, about $12 million direct and about $3 million indirect, that's how that money rolls through the community. And you can see that it supports basically 165 jobs in the gateway area. So that's, you know, as Andy was saying, that's the impact. And that's only people spending one night here at $99 a hotel, spending about 25 bucks or so on food and, you know, 20 bucks on gas. This isn't like an, you know, inflated number, it's just, you know, it's basically spent $5 at Walmart is what the economic calculator is based on. So you can imagine how potentially much larger it could be if they spent here for a couple of days.
Does this presentation need forward that to Eric so we can look at it?
I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Absolutely. I can send you all of this, I have handouts if people would like to sum up. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I would also volunteer us in, in, in a like more private meeting, you know what I mean? If you want to continue this conversation going outside of today.
Yeah, because when did you need a verbal?
We need to sign contract by the end of July. It's like, whoa, and then, then again, let's say it's looking good. And we say, let's give us a quick one. I mean, he has to plan for tickets for mid-August, so that's the, kind of like the hurry, so.
And a troll is already committed to for the Arboretum in Clinton and by the Clinton, they've already signed their contracts?
Sawmill Museum and Arboretum is happening. So either, either way this goes with Fulton, it's happening, we're bringing at least 60,000 visitors in the first six months. Mark my words. I'm gonna leave all these handouts here in case you guys, is that okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry?
You leave a few cards.
All right, Barb, Barb, your question earlier, the down payments.
I'll know, that's sticking around.
See, it's 100,000, we can do this. I mean, I know we can do this.
All right, next is consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda will be enacted by a single motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed upon request by the mayor or Alman, being considered individually after all other items of business on the consent agenda. And we're looking at the regular meeting minutes from June 23, 2025, page three to six. Approved the bill list, pages seven through 11, and then approved in May, 2025 treasurer report, pages 12 to 19. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of these items?
The meeting minute notes were the 23rd, we, because I didn't hear that, we actually changed the quiddities, two of them.
Yeah, I don't think it was noted. That was changed after the meeting.
Oh, it was? Okay.
I'll include that in the next minutes, that after more discussion, we did change a couple of the people for these minutes.
And then you relisted what it is now, okay?
Anyone else? Roll call please, Tori.
Alderperson Boonstra?
Yes.
Bergrath?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mass? Radcliffe?
Yes.
Sewell? Ben Campen?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on to current business, we have a motion to vote and approve to adopt the park strategic plan from MSA. We got the handout just this evening, the entire packet, that is. Motion please. Boonstra? Do you have a second?
I'm second.
Discussion?
Um, yeah, I think it should be tabled.
Well, I just want to preference, you do not have to vote on it tonight. We put it on there so that way if everybody had viewed it over the weekend and liked it, we could approve it. But we do not have to approve it tonight. So I'd like to have some more time to look at it. Same, because I made my motion to table it.
What was that?
I said I made my motion to table it.
I'll second it.
Table?
And I would just like to add, for those of you that haven't had a chance to read it yet, this is a living, breathing document, nothing is set in stone. It was simply created to, obviously, we need one, but a starting point so that we can get the OSLAB grant submitted for the splash pack. Because we need to have this before they would even consider the grant for us. So do not be alarmed if there's something in there you don't agree with. It's not saying we're doing it. It's, it's short-term, long-term goals that have been identified somewhere along the line.
It's also very much be similar to the strategic plan we're working on right now is, there may be ideas on there that we have and we, we never get to just because of funding or whatever reason. But you, you don't do it, you put it on your next one or you find something new you want to add to it instead, you change it out and it's something, this is, like Jackie said, a living, breathing document. We can add and subtract things as we see fit.
And what I love about this, and then as we get our bigger strategic, strategic plan for the whole city, is when new aldermen come in or new mayor comes in, we can say, hey, this is, this is what we're, where we're at. We have goals, objectives and a direction. And I feel like that's something that we've never had. So I just, thank you so much, Eric, for working with MSA on this and getting it going.
And that's to, to any other council person, when they look at this, write notes, if you have your ideas, we're welcome to, to hear them.
Yeah.
Yes, Sue unfortunately wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so she hasn't been able to see this, this draft of it yet. But yeah, it's, it's ideas that we've talked about for many meetings and we've never actually had them down in writing, so they're actually down in writing and there's a plan in place and different ways to improve them. And like Sue said, if, if there's things that you see you want it added or you don't think maybe you need to be in that, let us know. That way we can get it back to MSA and then they can, you know, make the final draft and you guys can vote on it.
Was there a deadline of this needing to be at least?
OSLAB is till the end of September.
September 30th.
Okay.
So we, we have a little bit of time in, but obviously we prefer not to wait till last November.
Anyone else? All right, Tori, roll call for table please.
Alderperson King?
Yes.
Mass? Radcliffe?
Yes.
Sewell? Ben Campen?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Boonstra?
Yes.
Bergrath?
Yes.
All right, next is motion to vote and approve the downtown redevelopment. Phase one financial summary and propose the expansion of the Fourth Street project. This is pages 20 to 25 in your packet here.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion?
Is this also something that we technically should table since it's the first time coming up in a meeting?
No, we had it, we talked about it last meeting.
Yeah.
It wasn't on the agenda, it came up, but it wasn't on the agenda, so that's why I didn't know what it was.
Okay. So I think it should be done because they're part of the district, business district, and how it only ended up to be two and not all three of them, it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, if you read through the notes.
And the idea of you're coming in, I mean, the one way is going from south to north. And you're going to take your first block in and you're not going to improve that. I mean, why are we doing it then? I mean, you want, first impression's everything. Your first impression is that block from 13th Avenue to 12th Avenue, okay? You don't improve it, you got to. You gotta do it for the businesses that are down there. You know, and it's not fair to leave them out. This should have never been, this should have never been drawn up this way. This should have been taken care of when we drew it up.
Keith, did you read through the notes that were attached to this financial summary? There was a time last year in the fall where Tammy had brought it to our attention and said if we wanted to move forward with phase one, we were going to have to only limit it to the two block radius. And we agreed upon that, whether that was wise or not.
I don't remember that being agreed upon.
It was in the minutes. And so ultimately, I agree, and I think most of us probably do, that it's, that we want to include that additional block and that we should.
And I mean, if, if that's the case, you can only do two. We should have started at 13th and worked our way north and made 11th to 10th the last one.
I think we had a lot on our plates at that time and that decision didn't get thoroughly worked through.
I agree, because I'm sitting here thinking, why would we have done that?
Yeah, we're going to do it, let's do the entire downtown exactly like that.
Yeah.
And why disinclude them? We might as well do it, we're going to tear it up now.
Right.
We might as well do it now, why everything else is torn?
Absolutely, because I'll tell you, as a business owner, I don't want it to go on any longer than it needs to. And if they're already there, get it done.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's going to, when are they going to be completed? Someone told me October.
October 1st is when substantial completion is supposed to be done.
Are we having the, the streets shut down that long?
Uh, that'll depend on the contract. I'm guessing once they get through running their pipes across the road, they will probably start opening back up. But it's easier to keep the road closed down all the time compared to trying to get cars to move out so they can start work.
Yeah. Well, and what the engineer told me was basically he wants to get everything done mid-September, then they will tear out the sidewalks. And we're going to have about two weeks of where you can't even access the front door of the businesses. Now, it's not going to be all at the same time, they'll do one block one side and then they'll do the next block next side.
Isn't part of them tore up now?
Just the front, the first two foot so they can get the, all the electrical conduit, all the water services, get their columns poured for each light post. So there's still five foot of sidewalk that they get accessible.
Yeah.
From a distance, it looks like there isn't sidewalk there, but once you walk up, you can see that there is.
Yeah, I walked down the America the other day.
Something that I want to point out is, you know, after our last meeting, you know, it's asked with Mindy and us in the finance committee to come up, well, if we do want to do that, where do we come up with funding for it? So that's what's really presented in pages 20 and 21. And, you know, if we want to move forward that, and it sounds like the concept does, you know, Eric has to put that out to bid with our current company. And the estimation is around $600,000 for that additional block. Some of that's already taken care of because we have a little bit of a surplus from phase one. And, you know, we, we came up with the rest of the money. It puts some of our funds, a little bit sugar than. And um, you know, we, we came up with the rest of the money. It puts some of our funds a little bit sugar than I personally would like to see, but it gets the job done for this first phase.
Yeah.
Now, phase two, which is, you know, currently slated for next year, I think that's a continued conversation to have. I think we need to do it because we have an Illinois EPA uh, uh loan forgiveness, um, that's gonna take care of a lot of stuff. If we don't get this grant uh that we're counting on, we're gonna be looking at a bond probably, and that's also gonna tax our reserves. Or we're gonna have to come up with funding, you know, probably out of one of those reserves. Um, but that will be a discussion for a later time.
Yeah.
Uh, for phase one though, I think we need to decide if we wanna move forward with that, and if so, um, I think Eric laid out a pretty good plan for funding that. Now, if they come back and they say, oh, actually it's a million dollars for this extra block, then I think we have to back away from that.
Is that, the six hundred thousand is just your estimation?
That was what me and the engineers had talked about was, we guessed that between five and six hundred thousands where we estimated they would come in at, but.
Okay.
But since they already have all their stuff there, I'm guessing it'll come down.
They're all there, yeah. We couldn't come back and ever do it this cheap again.
And we.
Right.
No.
And we have all the streetlights, we have all the new lights.
Right.
So that's part of the grant, we buy all the streetlights at one time, so that way, if for some reason they were discontinued, we have what we need and it'll match everything else.
Have those been purchased already?
If they're ordered, we have not seen it. We'll be.
So then will we have to get more, or was that block included?
No, no, we'll have, we'll have all of them through downtown.
That third block was included in the new lights.
There, there's actually four blocks, so it'll be from Thirteenth Avenue to Ninth Avenue.
Maybe, maybe that's why we thought that block was included because.
Is, is there a, um, a different map? This is the one that was handed out to me when we started this. Is there a different one? And that included all four blocks?
I can't see what you're holding from here, but.
It's for the sidewalks and the light.
There, there is, there is a plan for all four blocks.
Okay, and that's one that I have, okay.
And Sue, I think the important thing to remember is, that's, that's a plan from three years ago, you know, and that cost, the cost went from initially like eight point one million dollars estimated.
No, it's twenty twenty-four.
For the four block one?
Yeah.
Uh, this was from last year.
Okay, and I see it corrected.
So I think what Mindy read at the very beginning of this discussion was when we made the decision to go from the four block to the two block because of not having funding. That we had to make this decision, hey, if we wanna do any, if we wanna start anything this year on this project, how are we gonna cut back? And we said, okay, let's just do the two blocks, and that's how it came, and then we just kind of, I guess, didn't realize.
Well, uh, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, as the years have gone by, and the person that was leading this project is no longer with us, not only have costs increased over that timeframe, but the funding side of it obviously had not come in, but we have some grants and things that needed to move forward, moving forward in a more limited capacity. Even though, you know, it's not half of what our original number was, you know, because you just get less now, and that's why I think we should move forward because, that's what I said, it will never be cheaper than it is to do it right now.
I think, I think that's what we need to do is, is we need to move forward and include the third block and, and do it right. There ain't no sense of doing it, excuse my French, but at best, let's do it right.
So was the fourth block, um?
Post office, from Ninth Avenue all the way down.
Oh.
Uh, no, thirty-two.
Yep.
So. I say we will.
It's twenty twenty-four.
I have a very.
Ready about it.
Yep. Is everyone, any other discussion? I just, you know, I think uh, I sat in on the finance committee, and yeah, Mindy and Zach and Eric and Sally there as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, found some money for us to make this look, make this look better.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So since, since there, we have the equipment there, the price, could it come in at three, four hundred thousand? Maybe, I, I mean, I can't tell you. Can we look at what it costs to do the fourth block? You know, that one doesn't have a whole lot of storefront. Yeah, I mean, that, it's just gonna, we're gonna have to point to its contractor, so I mean, obviously they're gonna be the one to give us, we're just going off of, um, on that bid tab that we have, going off of those prices, and that's kinda where we came up with our number. Could it come in less? Very, very easily could, but I hate to tell you, yeah, it's gonna come in way less and we can do more, and then find out it's gonna be more than I anticipated.
Well, the same work need to be done on that fourth block, yeah.
But you got, what, two water services, well, you got two water services instead of, you got some light poles and. I don't know if that come in at two hundred thousand, they come in at three hundred for. Well, once I, once you guys vote to approve it, you know, I'll get back with the engineer, we'll get back with McCarthy, and they can get us some updated numbers and then we'll see where we're really at, and then.
Yeah, cause I think like the post office is only that one side.
I think.
The other side.
I think the plan does have the sidewalk going to Ninth, I think. I'd have to look at the plans again, but.
Cause there's a condo there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's to the alley.
And there's no.
There's no sidewalk.
No sidewalk. There's just no sidewalk in front of it either.
Big apron on KT three side.
Yeah. Cause that was the fire part.
Anyone else? Alright, we're gonna vote to expand. Roll call please, Tori.
Other person, Mass? Radcliffe?
Yes.
Sewell? Ben Campbell?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Boonstra?
Yes.
Bergrath? Yes. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Not in, it didn't concern that. At one time I seen pictures that we were gonna put a compass or something. Is that not in it?
We, we are trying to cut back costs, so we have eliminated all the extra things that we're talking.
I, I know when they showed us the virtual, it had.
That was talked about, but in order to cut back costs and be realistic on what this project should be, we cut.
I just wanted to make sure.
They have the emblem, the Fulton emblem, they changed it to the city Fulton emblem, yeah, cause cars are gonna keep driving over there, it's gonna paint that all the time.
Yeah, they're, they're painting it all the time, so.
No.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, we aren't even going that far anymore, right?
Well, maybe, we waited up.
When I, yeah, but we're not stopping. It was originally gonna be at the intersection of Tenth Avenue and Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Now we're not even going that far, so.
Okay, next we have um, discussion as a whole. Uh, Grow Clinton membership for the city, uh, Matt was here tonight.
Yeah, he should have stayed.
We got a, I knew he should have stayed. We got a bill in the mail for twenty-three fifty, is that right? Twenty-three hundred and fifty, if you look at page twenty-seven, it's uh, not an amount on the chart. So we're trying to, uh, there's a lot of history here, but we're trying to figure out where we wanna stand as a member and what services we want as a city.
Did the bill come in at twenty-three hundred?
Twenty-three fifty.
I brought this up like a year ago and said, why are we still paying this amount?
No, we went from five thousand, we cut it in half.
No.
No.
Oh, so I'll give a quick backstory. So basically, we were paying the fifteen hundred dollar month that went to Leslie for, that ceased last October, so that's been done and over with. Our membership with Grow was a merger of the Clinton visitor bureau, um, and then the Chamber of Commerce. We were paying two separate fees to be involved in those organizations, and when they merged together as Grow Clinton, everybody that was already existing members merged their membership fees and just continued to pay those amounts to support the nonprofit.
To give what level?
Uh, well, that's the, where the confusion comes in, is then they then created their levels and they didn't match up. And so I think we've agreed that we don't need to be paying the extra any longer, or at least that's what we should talk about tonight, that we don't need to pay that extra six hundred and fifty dollars or whatever, and we can drop back, or I guess it'd be six hundred dollars. Drop back to the seventeen fifty for the membership thing. But I think the important thing to recognize here is that our partnership with Grow Clinton affords us certain things, just as being part of the Clinton Fulton Command Region from a regional perspective, and that's not what we're paying for here. This is what we pay to be a member, just like any other business pays to be a member, and these are the services that we get with that membership. So I think we need to decide what we're gonna use, and if that's what we wanna pay for then, you know, because ultimately, some of the other things, um, that they'll do for us, they're gonna do anyway because they're our regional partner. You know, that we're part of that organization. But this is more so like, if Jackie was a member with Rooted, like what she would get for hers, this is what the city Fulton gets for theirs. So we just have to choose what membership level we wanna be at for that. They're still gonna bring us opportunities like Ari brought tonight, you know, with those type of things. And for us to join forces with them from a regional perspective, that's not what we're paying for. So what, what do you?
What do you recommend?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask.
Well, I, I, I agree with Shane, but I think.
I'm recommending the seventeen fifty.
Yeah, we peel it back from.
It's uh, six hundred less than what it is, but looking at the chart though, I wanna make sure that we use every item afforded to us.
So, so this is.
We're, we're gonna have two ribbon cuttings, but, you know, we're gonna take advantage of every service they would buy.
And that could be like city attractions, like maybe, you know, when, like we just used one when the windmill had there.
Right.
You know, that's one for the city to use, and we can afford those to other people or other events that are happening and things like that. If the city doesn't specifically have like a spotlight on success happening, we can decide if we wanna use that for another entity or organization.
Have we ever used the radio interview?
No, and those are becoming more popular too, those and the podcasts both, people are tuning in to listen to what the businesses have going on and what they're doing, and so I think these are definitely, I mean, Shane could get down there and talk about upcoming.
I'm invited to do a podcast soon. Can't wait to hear.
So, well, we used to use them.
As soon as Eric will go with me.
So this is my input. The last two years, been a part of the tourism committee, there's been nobody whatsoever managing the tourism, anything, the funds, the activities, anything. We have literally been throwing out the window twenty-three hundred dollars since I have sat in this chair. I, we were paying Leslie and we were paying that fee. Leslie left a year ago, we continued to pay that fee. A year ago, I said, why are we still paying this odd twenty-three hundred dollar? Mindy explained it, just like she did well. But, I would like to see us drop down and see if we even noticed that we're not getting the, any services. I would say go to eight hundred or three fifty, and if we're like, you know what, we really missed those services, then the next year we bump it up. But right now, we've had these services for multiple years and we have not used them. So, that's kinda where I sit.
I think I'll use them, but, and I, I'm.
When we.
I'm kind of the latter, like, we, we do the seventeen fifty, I mean, we've already been spending twenty-three hundred, so we're saving six hundred already, and if we don't use these, next year we drop down, you know.
Where are we gonna get this thing, yeah.
We did use this.
Okay.
Uh, we paid five thousand at first, and that's when we had a tourism director and everything, yes, we did pay that. And then I thought, um, I remember, right, we cut it in half because we didn't have a tourism director or anything anymore.
And then, you know, we gotta keep in mind, like, this is for the city, it's a city membership. Now, when a new business open up in town, opens up in town, we can't use a city ribbon cutting for that, but they'll probably do the ribbon cutting anyway. And they come over that first month and help that small business like get off the ground and it's, it's kind of a recruit.
If the business pays to be a member, then they will.
No, at, at first they just do it for free, to kinda like recruit the business as well, like, hey, you know, we helped set you up, would you like to now be a member, you know? It's a recruiting strategy for them, for sure, but.
As long as there's someone actually monitoring and using these, because we haven't had that tourism director position to actively be doing these activities.
When they have their monthly meeting as well, and I know in the past, well, Mindy goes, but, you know, someone didn't go, but I'm invited and I plan to go.
Okay. If, if somebody, like I said, is going to actually take advantage of these things and the money is going to be useful, then I can get on board with that. But, to just keep paying it and not taking advantage of the services, then I don't see it being useful.
Well, it's not really a vote, but are you all comfortable with the seventeen fifty membership? Um, next, uh, Eric's gonna talk about the splash pad.
So I kinda touched on a little bit at the last meeting, uh, if you go to page twenty-eight, that's where some of the concepts uh start. We have four different concepts, um, we're working with MSA on this project in a company called Vortex, they specialize in aquatics. So, uh, did put prices on here, but um, option number one, which is your first page, uh, comes in around eighty-three thousand. Um, option two comes in around seventy thousand, option three, um, that one comes in around ninety-one, and then option four comes in at about a hundred and five. So this, this idea kind of started with uh Kuanis Group, uh, the money that they are getting for the Queen of Hearts. Uh, they have earmarked so many dollars to help go towards the purchase of a splash pad. Um, and the Fun Crew has also done the same, they have earmarked uh an amount to help offset some of this price. Um, we are, we kinda touched on it earlier, uh, we are going after an OSLAD grant, um, hopefully around four hundred and fifty thousand, I think.
I was gonna say three hundred fifty maybe.
I might be off on that number, but it's somewhere in that area, but, so with that, that's a fifty fifty grant, so we would have to come up with half of that money. Uh, and actually you have to pay it all front, then they reimburse you on, on the backend, but we would have to fund the whole project, and then we would get reimbursed for fifty percent of it. So, with what Kuanis is looking at doing, uh, the Fun Crew, um, what the city can afford, um, we definitely feel like this is a doable project for the city. Uh, we're kind of, right now, tentatively looking at the Tenth Avenue Park area, uh, seems to be about the best fit for that area. There was talk of going to drives at one point in time, but we just didn't feel as it was gonna be as visible as it could be compared to being up at Tenth Avenue Park. Um, you know, and that's where, you know, damage to equipment comes in, and you know, if nobody's gonna be around, or there's no streetlights, nobody's gonna see it, and that's how things get damaged. So, that's kinda how we came up with Tenth Avenue Park as the best site for it, um, especially with the addition of the new playground equipment we have up there. Um, there would be a pavilion we would add to the Tenth Avenue Park to um, give uh families a shaded area to sit. That'll also have a couple bathrooms and a mechanical room that'll run all of this equipment as well. So, um, it's a, quite an elaborate process, but we just wanted you guys to see some of the concepts we're looking at. Uh, the Splash Pad Committee actually meets tomorrow to look at these and kinda dissect them, you know, take, take what we liked off of some and then go to other ones. Um, and then hopefully we can kinda pin down a actual concept that we all like, and I can bring that back to you once we figure out what that is, and everybody can take a look at it.
Price that you quoted for each of these, is that just for the equipment?
It's just for the equipment. Total price tag, um, I mean, and, and a lot of it depends on which equipment we go with. Um, we're looking anywhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand. It just depends on the equipment and, you know, some of the stuff will be done, like, the water service will be ran, you know, and that's on the city to do. So there's, there's a lot of things in this that are estimated, but the city would take care of ahead of time. So, um, that's our guess is three fifty to four hundred dollars.
Quick question on the design, uh, for number three, does that include canopies in that price?
Uh, no.
That are in that picture. Okay, I just wanted to, no, that was had it, and I.
Yeah, that was just something Vortex threw in there. Obviously, you can add those, but that comes with a hefty price tag as well.
Could we do it independently of that design? Like, I'm just thinking ahead, you know, some shade.
Well, that's why, that's why, as we were talking about this, we, we talked, well, maybe a pavilion with bathrooms on the backside would be the greatest benefit compared to having like the shaded area. Cause the, the pavilion would be right off the edge of the slab from where we're looking at putting this. Um, a mom or dad, whoever can go, they can sit in the shade, not have to be out in the sun while whoever's out there playing. So that's, that's the only good thing we thought of is, it gave us space for our mechanical room, it also added additional bathrooms up there as well. So, that was kind of our thought process on it. Does it go on the east end of the Tenth Avenue Park? Yes. So, to, so you can kinda visualize like where the same volleyball courts used to be, that's kinda the area we're looking in right now. Then would you get rid of the other bathrooms and? We would still leave those, just, um, we just feel like it'd be better to have four bathrooms compared to just one. Um, and those are fairly recent that those were put up there, so we thought an additional bathroom wouldn't hurt anything.
We were kinda thinking bathhouse, you know, so changing rooms, so if you bring your kid in the restroom trunks, it, it's convenient right there, you can go get dressed and be right there. Instead of, those bathrooms are a little walk away from the actual, and there's just one stall, so you'd be waiting in line, so that was kind of, uh, it's not necessary. that was kind of, uh, it's not necessary, um, it's something that if we get the funds, we would like to do, if we don't, it would be the first thing to go. But it they, when we told them, actually Eric brought up the idea of adding that structure, they're like, that would actually be really nice because there would actually be a building, the house, like he said, uh, controls.
Yeah, all the mechanicals for it.
Yeah. So then when you're messing with the things, you can look out the window and see if your pressure you're adjusting is right and all that.
Who did you meet with Eric on this?
Tara. Kwanis was the one that actually initially brought it to me, and then I said, well, I would feel a lot better if we talked to an engineering firm because I've heard horror stories of other communities doing it, and a few months down the road or another year down the road, all the equipment froze because they didn't know how to properly take care of it, and then they're back to square one. Uh, so that's where I said, if we're gonna do it, let's do this right, let's get the engineering team involved, um, and they can dissect everything, they can get us in touch with the right people. Um, and help us with the grant process as well.
You know how much the city would have to come up with?
I don't have that figure right now, um, like I said, it'll kinda depend on what one we we'd like and what we'd end up going with. Um, and that'll that'll tell me the final price tag, but.
Well, and if we get the grant.
Yeah, if you get the grant, I mean, yeah, and and we're actually going to actively fundraise for this as well, um, and apply for some local grants like through, um, the Timken Foundation, we're gonna apply for that grant again, um, so we're hoping we can limit as much money as we can that the city would have to pay, but I mean, we will have to pay something, I just don't have a good figure for you yet.
Well, and target date was twenty-twenty-seven, so we have.
Yeah, this would be two years, if at all, if we get the grant this year, it wouldn't be till spring of twenty-twenty-seven that then we would even start.
Okay.
Or they said twenty-six, but we possibly.
Twenty-six would be, yeah, twenty-six would be a stretch.
But didn't they say that, like, you could build it, but you wouldn't turn it on till twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Like, if for some reason you wanted to do it in the fall, you could, but you wouldn't operate it till twenty-seven at the earliest.
Cause you have two years from the time of award to complete the project, and then you can get extensions, but it's it's kind of a pain, so that's that's our goal is spring of twenty-twenty-seven to have construction, assuming we get the grant, if if we don't get the grant, we wait till the next year we apply again.
So Barb, is Kwanis still interested in?
We've committed seventy-five thousand, um, back when we first talked about it, and, um, as we accumulated a little more money with the pot growing out at the Queen of Hearts, we discussed again at the last board meeting, maybe we could up it to eighty-five thousand, so. So I mean, Kwanis is definitely on board.
They're the ones that have been spearheading all the meetings and everything.
Yeah, this this, actually, this conversation about splash pads started probably two years ago, and it was just kind of an idea kinda thrown around and then it was like, well, we don't know if this is what we wanna do yet, so then it kinda backed off and then.
It was, it what we were talking about back four or five years ago.
Yeah, so this this idea's kind of been around for a while, um, but it just seems to have grown traction here within the last, uh, four months, maybe?
Well, you said it's in the Parkmaster plan, so we'll review that and, you know, next meeting, we're gonna move the vote on that plan anyway, and it's in there, so we can go from there. Uh, did you wanna talk about the Christmas lights next, Eric?
So, uh, with redoing of downtown, uh, the Christmas lights we have are very old and ancient, to put it nicely, so.
Jimmy loves them.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, since we're gonna be putting up the brand-new streetlights, uh, we update, and we do not have to do this, this is just something I found on the internet. Uh, just to kinda give you an idea of what we could do, uh, but my recommendation would be to update the street or the Christmas lights, um, get us something a little more modern. We're already gonna have the brackets on the streetlights anyways, so we figured we might as well put some new streetlights up there, spruce up the downtown.
The six-foot lights, do they, uh, how much do they take up of the new light poles? I don't even know about the new light poles.
Uh, new light poles are about twenty-five foot tall.
Okay.
So it it really wouldn't take up much of it, cause you, with the with these lights, you have to be above fourteen foot at the lowest part, so they'll be they'll be up there ways. That way, we don't have to worry about a semi coming in and hitting one.
I kinda like the idea of the snowflake, we could leave it up till like February, I think it's been.
Yeah, I mean, I, this was just one company I talked to, um, there's hundreds of them out there, so it's just if you want me to continue to look into this, I can.
I think I had some looks at home there.
Oh, I, I've seen. So they, like I said, I just kinda pulled these off, um, I I Clinton does have the snowflakes, if you ever go across South Ridge and look up Second Street, they have them all over, so uh, I just thought that was a nice look, um, there, like I said, there's a hundred different designs that we can go with, but I thought maybe alternating them compared to just having one the entire stretch of four streets.
You can get the ones that go on the road.
That is an option, so.
The new lights are getting installed in this first phase, right?
Yeah.
Yep, so we do need something by this holiday season or we'll.
Well, we're either gonna, we're either gonna get something new or we're gonna put the old back up, so.
Eric, you can't even get replacement bulbs, I don't believe, for those old ones anymore, because I remember fifteen years ago when we were talking about this.
They're special order, we can get them, but they're a special order and they cost. Cause we went through, what was it, two years ago, we got those Rebecca, and we had to go through and redo a bunch of them.
The wreaths, they take.
Yeah, those actually came from Propstown.
They take C.
C-nines?
C-nines, I think.
Yeah.
I was able to get them on, cause the Christmas Walk Committee actually bought those, uh, for the city, I I was able to get them off of Amazon.
Yeah, they were, we bought the ones that are, we bought those used for Propstown, cause the ones that we had weren't working.
And they, we rehabbed them, they looked much worse.
So what firm would you suggest paying for these with?
Um.
We asked the Dutch Days Committee to put money towards them. You got her speakers for the light poles.
Yeah, I mean, you you have, there's plenty of funds we can take it from, we can take it from we can take it from our economic development, we could take it from video gaming, cannabis, I mean, there's there's all sorts of funds we could take it from.
You have, um, eight and eight, or sixteen total?
Yep.
Where does that expand downtown?
That would be from Thirteenth Avenue to Ninth Avenue.
Okay.
So it should be eight poles, yeah, it should be eight poles on each side.
Okay.
And that's what they have right now.
Oh, okay, okay, not two blocks.
We're not gonna make that mistake again.
I will, uh, I won't be at the next meeting, I'll be on vacation, but I'll get some more ideas for you to look at, and then just let me know what you think and we'll.
I usually get the new book the first of July afternoon.
Let's say, usually, usually they send them out here coming up, so, but I figured at least if we kinda had this on our radar, we could be out of the game.
What's the lead time?
They seem like we could get them fairly quick, but they say that now, the longer you wait, the more they're gonna serve.
I saw the July, August fifteen percent discount fly.
Yeah, yeah, right now.
That still get us. Get us here in October or you have some discount.
Christmas in July.
I'm in favor, I just, um, I prefer to see the where the extra block estimate comes in at first.
All right, next is the troll discussion, do we need to revisit that, that's what Ari already presented.
I guess what's the council's feeling on it, is this something they're interested in?
It's a short, uh, short window.
Yeah, yeah, end of the month.
Yeah.
I would like to see us entertain other funding sources opportunities, but I am on board, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it our costs would be lower to join them, and you get that dual.
And if, eh, as we listen to Ari talk, you know, obviously, they have a big goal of a hundred and twenty thousand in a year, do I think it's attainable? With the right marketing, yeah, anything is, um, and we're always looking for new ideas to get people to come to full. To me, eh, is is the price a little steep? Yeah, I mean, it's not cheap, but nothing is anymore either, so, but.
Well, like Jackie said, you get the data to back up what the investment's gonna break out, like, it's gonna.
And, you know, she, you know, when you put it into the number of people and the tax dollars coming back into your community, like, we'll have return on investment in a pretty short amount of time, like, two to three years, tops.
I mean, I don't know if you listened to Ari, but she seemed pretty excited about it, so.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think she's gonna market it all.
Well, I feel like we'd be kicking ourselves in if we didn't.
I think so too, and I I couldn't help but think when I was sitting in the Kwanis meeting, coincidentally, we're we're at a, you know, crossroads with the marina, right? And this could be something that's bringing a potential investor to our area to possibly help us figure out what we're gonna do with that marina, a buyer or an investor that wants to start something in that area. I mean.
Let's say money wasn't an issue, where would you all prefer it to be?
River.
Under the bridge, right, Eric?
Yeah, we're trolls' lake, he said.
Either either down in the canyon or.
I think, yeah, I I would, anywhere from Heritage Canyon to the marina on the river, cause the the first time the idea was ever introduced to me was the sawmill putting theirs up and then us ours, and they're like looking at each other across the river. Um, I don't know if that's what he's gonna do, ultimately, it's up to him, um, and then he, like, he literally writes a story about these trolls, so however he works our troll into his story will be whatever he's doing and wherever he's at, so I don't know what he's got going on in his brain.
I'd like it to be open-ended, because, you know, say we do get the marina, and say it's put down at the the windmill four or five years from now, the marina gets redone, or gets sold, somebody puts a bunch of money into it.
Right.
Put another one down there.
Well, and he could drop one down in the canyon, like, we could make a cool little, you know.
If you look at his his models that he got from the state of Iowa and what the potential would be coming back into our area, I mean, you're looking you're looking at a a big spending in our area just by people coming here, you know, say they do start in Clinton, they end in Fulton, alright, where's the best place to go eat? Um, is there a close pizza joint, you know, all those things transpire into tax dollars coming back into us, you know, are we gonna get anything directly from that troll? No, it's all the indirect costs that come with it, and that's that's what this is is showing you that, you know, this indirect cost that we're gonna get is I mean, as we know, things are tight anyways, you know, if if you have that ability to increase some kind of tourism to draw people to us, I mean.
It's something that's a leading edge-like thing where people are just getting into it too, to be a part of it.
Being the only one in Illinois, your population base is Chicago.
Is Eric guaranteeing that?
Absolutely.
First.
Yeah, and they're already coming out here.
Is Eric guaranteeing that for you now? That we would be the only one in Illinois?
He only wants one in every state.
He said he wanted one every state, now, in ten years, he could say I'm gonna add more, I don't know, but as of right now, that's his goal is to have, and not not one troll, but one, what'd she call it?
Location or whatever.
Yeah, one location.
That's fair.
Installment was her wording, um.
So I had like a thousand questions when they were presenting, I didn't really wanna take up any more of their time. One one of the ones, one of the questions that I had, maybe somebody here can answer, the ten-year lease, like, we don't have property right, we don't have the rights to it after ten years?
We can't remove it from that spot until.
Yeah.
The clarification was, the one in Chicago was there two years and they burned it down, and it was like, I wanted to at least be standing for ten years. So that's what that's what that ten-year lease was, that we can't take it down for ten years.
Or we knew he would get it back or something.
Yeah.
He could move it somewhere else if he wanted to.
Okay, but we can move it anywhere within our geography?
I think once it's there, I think it's gotta stay there.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is, I assume that, uh, what's his name, Thomas Dambo is, lives in Denmark?
Yes.
Right, he lives in Denmark, just think about Fulton as the destination place now, think of this, a splash pad, the windmill, our Heritage Canyon, a troll. We have a lot to offer if you have all of these wonderful, beautiful things, people to come and visit, and we are right on the main channel of the Mississippi River, which we never can be thankful enough for having that as an asset, so there's so many cool things, and I really think this is something the town would come to life over, I really do, with the troll.
How big is the arboretum there's gonna be?
There's would be similar to our size, the sawmill's doing the big, big one.
Yeah, the the arboretum is about half the size of the biggest one, and because that fit better with what they and where they wanna put it, but then they've got the real large one coming up at the sawmill.
I had a lead, but do, okay, do we get to decide what kind of design, or does he already come into the area and he looks around and see what would best fit?
He makes recommendations from what I was told, um, he will make a recommendation after he tours and sees what our main concept is here and come up with ideas. And then final decision, I guess, it belongs to the Fulton City.
I just think it's a great opportunity, I mean, if if, as a citizen, as a business owner, if I heard we had the opportunity to bring sixty thousand people to our new people, to our downtown, I would want my city to do that.
I think we should prepare like a list of funding sources, people that we wanna reach out to, to see if they want assistance with funding.
So when this idea was first brought up, and I'm not gonna say his name, but he had reached out to me, um, and said he'd be willing to give fifty thousand dollars right away, yeah.
That's what we're willing to hear.
Yeah, so it it, cause that's just how strongly he feels about getting this here as a a tourism.
I really think we could get a lot of good, really good contributions.
You know, think of the things that we could do with the money that's coming into our community, we have a higher tourism fund, we actually have a person that, and then the the day is gonna come where we're gonna have to pay people to run the windmill and Heritage Canyon, our our volunteer base is not in a position to volunteer and be there long hours, we're gonna want that thing open, we're gonna have to staff it, we're gonna have to have someone running tours, like, that's what we want, right? And this could be the revenue source that allows us to pay people to keep our attractions actually open during the day for people to come see.
I think you gotta think about it kinda like you just did with with Main Street, you're never gonna get an opportunity to have it any cheaper than what you are right now.
Right.
I mean, eh, eh, I mean, eh, if you waited two years and seen how Clinton did, oh, wait two years.
We could've done that.
Then you, you're already behind the eight ball, and then you're gonna have to pay all that extra money to bring him back. I mean, at first, I was really, I was like.
Somebody else.
Free control, I was like, serious, I'm serious, I was, I was like.
Same.
This troll is, until you start looking at it and see him, but the numbers are and stuff like that, then, and again, same with you, with, just like Main Street, if you don't do it now, you're probably for one never gonna do it or ever be able to afford to do it.
And you know, she's devoting so much of her time, she had, she's getting nothing out of any of this, but she has spoken to every group, every organization that they want her there, boom, she's there, and she gets the time and does it. So she's a marketing person, she knows about marketing, and I I really believe that, you know, she totally believes in this, and I think she's got the numbers to prove it, so it's truly something that we could all jump in and get the community come to life about, I think they'd all just love it, everybody would.
And one thing she didn't touch on, that it is kind of a community project, and that it is all made of materials from this area, there will have to be a committee that Barb will probably head up, that will have volunteers that are truly gathering the, um, number, the steel.
He might tell us, find some old tire rims or find some old this, some old that, and he, cause he's got ideas, but we all have to, you know, think, oh, I think there might be some over the farm over there, whatever. That's what it's gonna take, is real involvement from the whole community.
People will think that's need to contribute to it and say, my old tire rims in there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
We got a scrapyard.
Go ahead, Tori.
I'm not speaking as city clerk right now, because I'm not supposed to speak, but as Representative Heritage Canyon, this, we would be crazy if we did not do this, and if you wanna we'd see how Clinton does, and then wait a couple years, well, they might just say, forget Fulton, we're gonna put one in Savannah, we don't, you know. We're we're not, we might not get the opportunity to change our minds.
It's just convenient for him to do it now, he makes it to a whole other location in Illinois.
And somebody needs to get the numbers I gave, Sue, or I can bring them in again for our two, uh, state reps, because the thing is. they can jump in right now, and with the fact that, that, um, they both, I know, have tourism dollars to offer, all the cities in their districts, and so.
Ever.
What?
And what have they given us, re- in the recent years?
We've never asked for anything, and they're not gonna give you a call and say, hey Fulton, you need about ten thousand dollars?
Nothing, right? Yeah. So it's time we ask.
Okay, you've got to get ahold of them and get them here, it's so important to do that.
Spain's coming Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Representative Spain will be here Wednesday.
I've got flyers, I got everything on the phone, but I'll, I'll help you do that too, contact them, but Eric Sorensen said he will come, he will definitely be here to talk to Fulton about needs, wants, and everything else, um, he said Barb, he called me and I was outside mowing, I'm so mad, and and he said, just give me another call back, and I do have his private cellphone, so I can get ahold of him, but that's what I wanted to talk to everybody about too, to see is, a good date for that, and you come up with one or two, no more than that, items that you think the feds can help us with, you can't just give them a whole pile, I need this, that, and that, you have to commit to one or two major things that we need here, if it's infrastructure, if it's whatever, that's how you get the dollars from the feds.
One thing I just wanna add, uh, from a finance committee perspective, is, it sounds like everybody's very, you know, has a positive attitude towards this. Um, and this was a very short slide presentation, the two big amounts came from private donations on the Iowa side, I think the city of Clinton committed twenty thousand, if I'm not mistaken on that?
Twenty thousand.
I have no problem with Fulton committing some seed money towards it, if that helped us get a contract signed in the short amount of time, but I would much prefer at that point, you know, private donations or fundraising, whatever, be the bulk, um, raiser of the overall amount, now, do, are we able to sign a contract that says, you know, city of Fulton wants to do this, but we don't wanna be on hook for the money part, I don't know, I don't know what the contract actually looks like.
I don't know.
So, that's something that we definitely have to look at, um, and I know we're on a short timeframe, so.
Will the city have the contract to you, Eric, to look at, or do you know?
I'm not sure, I can reach out to Ari and see if I can get that from her.
Yeah, it'd be good to know.
Just, just to look at it, yeah.
Well, she'll have one, you know, so, yeah, they'll, they'll get it to you.
I mean, it's something, just, you know, wheels are turning and, you know, everybody's enthusiastic about it, I'm partial to it, but not at the expense of two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
No, and I, I don't think anyone expects the city to pay two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but I think it would be a city attraction, so it does need city support, and it, and we should definitely give some money, um. But yeah, such a short amount of time to be like, are there more fifty thousand dollar donors out there? What's Kuanis wanna do, what's the city wanna do, what can we get, you know, to, to fill in, there's such, you know, but if we can maybe give Ari a head nod, we're interested.
Yeah.
How much time would he give us to actually try to get our ducks in a row, would he hold us to the same timeline that they are? Because he's gonna come here, he's gonna build theirs, maybe gives us a little bit more time, since we're coming in late to the game, they've been planning this for how many months?
If they're not looking to do it until June of next year anyways, that, I mean, that gives you about a year to.
They're coming here August, alright?
Yeah.
In the middle of August to just look at the area, to try to see what would be the best thing for them, and then possibly us. And then he said, you know, according to what he told her, then he'll sit down and talk about ideas of what's what, but it would be for next year installation and build.
Sure, sure, and I wanna make sure we're all on the same.
I think.
So is this total project, five hundred thousand?
Four hundred and twenty some is what Clinton's got for their big one.
Uh, their city of Clinton right now, Sawmill has committed five hundred thousand, Big Hop is headed two hundred and fifty.
Two fifty thousand, yeah.
So they're at seven fifty without us doing any.
With the two of them.
And so it just depends on the size of troll, that's why one's a huge one, so they're doing five hundred and one's not as big, so.
Well, no, I was just looking at, cuz the artist bees, now, his is a flat rate, correct? Two hundred and thirty thousand installation product, twenty thousand, so.
Right, that's right.
So his, his is automatic, two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
On the medium sized troll.
Huh?
So this isn't exactly what she showed us at Kuanis, there was three different sized trolls.
Right, three different sizes.
Right.
And the two fifty was the middle sized troll, so if we wanted to do the full size one, it would jump up to the three hundred.
Right, and I thought we wanted to do the, I, the middle size.
I, I don't know what we want, she just threw in that two hundred fifty dollar range to give us an idea, that's something we'd have to figure out.
I think we're planning on setting it somewhere like the.
No, I was just trying to get some of the whole tolls, and make sure I had it broke down right.
Let, let's have Eric get the contract over first and see how it's worded, I don't know if you can, if I can review it or whatever, but if it's a contract where it says, you know, city of Fulton, you're on the hook for a hundred percent of the money, I'm a lot less interested, but if it, if there's variables into that, very much more interested.
Alright, um, any other person comments, new business?
I actually have some I'm supposed to bring up.
Cats.
Yeah, cats, does anybody else, I've got some, um, citizens in my ward that are complaining about all the, um, what would you call them?
Stray cats.
Stray cats, and they aren't just like stray, they are coming with fleas and sickly, and I, lady talked to me this morning for fifteen minutes, she's losing her mind, she can't sleep at night, because she lets her dog out, comes in with fleas, she sprayed her house multiple times, the yard, she's had her insects, she's hundreds and hundreds of dollars in because she came through these fleas. And I said, have you called animal control, and she said, well, another person who's dealing with it too, said they called and they're real backed up, and I said, call animal control, tell them everything you told me, and maybe the city can also call and have, I don't know.
Animal control won't do nothing for cats.
They won't.
Will they come and get them?
No.
They will not come and get them?
No. They're very limited resources, and they're out of Rock Falls?
What's their answer?
Deal with it, they're not coming to do it.
So can you, I mean, would, how do you deal with it?
Try to get people to stop feeding them.
Yeah.
That's the problem, that's why they're wrong, cuz people still feed them. Yeah, unfortunately, that's true.
Well, then they're multiplied, you know.
Yeah, they, you can try to hire an outside company to come in, but even then, they're, they're pretty limited on what they can do.
So we just tell them to.
I tried, cuz I had two of them fighting out in my bedroom, the whole big cat.
Yeah, we just. We, we started looking into this back in January.
Yeah.
Oh, did you?
Of ways to take care of it. Um, Seventh Avenue's got a bad problem with it, that there's one person, or two people up there that are feeding them, so they're constantly coming back. One sand, it's ruining their siding, the cat keeps pissing on it.
Not that this would be an ultimate solution, but I believe Clinton just passed a ordinance recently that prohibited feeding of ferrets slash stray cats and other animals, and again, that goes into the enforcement side of it, I don't know if we wanna be putting our code officer towards that, but at least would send the message that, you know, stop feeding these cats, especially the strays, but.
Well, and it kinda tells our citizens, like, we're aware, we're trying to help, but you, you have to, y'all have a pigeon and health situation too, we can't just go around killing cats.
Unfortunately, eradication is the only way to solve the problem, but no one's gonna ever buy off on that.
Um, one more thing that I had as an alderman, um, with the downtown closed, the biz, a couple of businesses have asked if we could have some signs made where it says road blocked, or what's this say, barricade ahead, right at the barricade, have it say downtown businesses open, turn right to get to Rooted Boutique, and Don Julio's, and Homemade Hippie, turn left to access Crumpets, Dandelion Wishes, and actually list the businesses underneath the right or left.
Weight finding signs, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, so that's appropriate, I saw three women trying to look for the entrance of the sidewalk, um, so I was crossing, um, Fourth Street on Tenth Avenue, so it's pulling into, uh, pulling into KT three, and they eventually figured out I was gonna walk over there and help them, but it took them a while to figure, they had to actually go around and come back in, um, through, I guess that would be, um, post office side, or on that side.
I really think people don't understand how many people come to our town that are not from the area in any given week. And especially in the summer months, we've got a lot of people traveling, I had one week, it was all just groups of women from all over, and I'm like, gosh, thanks for coming, and it was the day, it was kind of the week before, no, it was the week it all started, like, what's going on? So they were just putting up the fencing, there wasn't drilling, there wasn't holes quite yet. They didn't know they were gonna come to our downtown and see all of this, we, I wish we would've been proactive in this, but now we need to rectify it, we've gotta get signage, and I'd say we oversign the place. You, you say what direction to go, and then on each block when you're coming down this street, turn here for these businesses, parking on the side, like, we have to do this for everybody, cuz.
Eric, is this something that public works can take on or?
Uh, I'm gonna.
Now we need to get sign, official signs made, or?
Enter the sidewalk.
I wanted to talk to McCarthy and see what they can do, if they can't do anything, we'll just call R K, and we'll get them in ourselves.
Yes.
Sidewalks open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sidewalks.
The sooner the better, obviously, I, and this project, you know, got going, I, somebody said earlier, I had no idea it was going till October first, and I've, I honestly, I feel bad for the business owners downtown because
It's tough.
It's, it's prime, obviously, summer hours and traffic flow is, is inhibited.
I got to work one morning and one of my good customers were sitting in their truck right out here, and she's like, can I get to your store? Because if you don't get up and walk, it doesn't look like you can even access the sidewalk, so.
Did you hear?
What I was saying, you can't even, if you're not all the way to the end, you don't even know how to enter the sidewalk.
Correct. Correct.
So.
Because it looks like they're just totally blocked off.
Yeah. I know Kayla put our sign there and said sidewalk accessible, you know, with the arrow.
Thank you, anyone else?
I have a question, uh, with the sidewalk renovations, are trash, trash receptacles, are those included in the new ones?
I don't know, I'd have to look back through the.
I see all the old ones in a dumpster down.
That's because every single one of them was rusted through, so, okay, so we're, if we, if we can't, if it's not in the contract, we have to purchase it, obviously, so, but if you're gonna do it, you really don't wanna reuse the old ones, any brand, brand new downtown, so. We're more than likely gonna put something new in, but what it is yet, I haven't figured out.
Perfect.
They were in there, but maybe not.
I know it was talked about at one point in time, but I.
Maybe they got like.
I'll look back through the bid document, oh shoot, I can't, I don't have it. Give it back to the engineer, yeah, I should be getting it back here soon, so, as soon as I get it back, I'll look at it.
Alright, next we have the finance committee report, Mindy, did you ever, uh, wanna briefly touch on that or?
Um, so this was actually the meeting prior to the one that Eric put the financial update in there for the project, uh, we actually met July first, and that's the one that we already went over, and then this was prior to that, so mine actually might've been a little outdated. Um, because we updated some of the funds and things that we were using for the financial part of the project. But just to quickly notate, some of the other things that were on there, were kind of all ups to the fact that we had agreed on the comprehensive and strategic plan options, um, with MSA, um, talking about, um, the tourism director position, and just that we were looking to make sure that we had the funds that we needed to hire that position, and that's out right now, that.
Yeah, the, the council still needs to vote on whether they want to proceed with it.
Okay, so maybe we need to bring that back around to discussion.
Put that as an action item for the next meeting?
Yes, oh, and then the civic system for city of Fulton purchase orders, um, this is something I really like the idea of, but basically, it's been looked at to help log and track expenses for each department, the overall review. Um, that large expenditures, even within budgets, should be noted for awareness to the council, just so that we're aware of what's happening with those type of things. Um, those can be included in the department head reports or submitted with the agenda, whichever makes the most sense, so. I think that was the gist of it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? After reading the.
No, thank you guys for the extra work you've done on the third street though, per, third block.
Alright, next is, uh, community service officer report, Adam, what do you got?
I just wanted to give you guys a little breakdown of what I've been dealing with in the last couple of months, from May to June, um, it's pretty black and white as far as it really was, um, I also gave you for the first half of the year, as far as the international property maintenance code, a summary of the properties I had addressed, and how many are in progress, um, completed, people that are kinda blowing me off, things like that, so. It's more or less, um, any questions you have, one that I can ask or answer, um, I did wanna touch on that property in five seventeen Twelfth Avenue, so we've kinda I've been talking with the homeowners about it, and apparently, I've been kinda lenient with them as far as, hey, I'll give you some time to get the finances for it, but it doesn't sound like it's going very good, so I don't know if it's time for us to kinda move forward. Um, so I did send a letter that was certified to them, saying that by August first, I wanted to get a smittle plan from them as far as what their intentions are, what they're gonna use to do, and stuff like that. And then once it's, you know, they have that six months to complete it, so at least it gives a little deadline, so, and a lot of people are starting to ask me about it, so I feel like it's time to kinda nudge it a little bit more, so.
Do they earn a lot right next to it?
No.
No.
No, it's, it's, um, Tom, Tom Weirigay.
Weigagay?
Oh, Weigagay.
Weigagay, yeah. Yeah. So. But on that, if anybody had questions on some of the stuff I'm doing.
Alright, chief, uh, wanna talk about a hearing report there?
Well, the biggest thing is, is we've lost Officer Matthew Munson, he's been hired by the Fulton Police, or correct, the Morrison Police Department. Um, not really a big deal, because I had to stole one from Morrison. So, uh, kind of a, kind of a flop, um, so today, Officer Drew Missville started with us, so we had zero lost time, um, in, in personnel. Um, Drew brings with him six years air force, security forces experience, and two years from the city of Morrison. So he's already up and running, starting today, um, we need Drew. Huh?
Can we meet him?
Yep, yep. I'll make sure he's at the next meeting.
Do you know why Matt left?
Um.
Do you know why Matt left?
Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time for Matt, um, he wasn't, with his age and the way things progressed, Fulton can be pretty, uh, challenging at times, um, the individuals, so we didn't have enough time in his training to make sure everything was being done safely and effectively, um, so unfortunately, we, uh, come to an agreement, and he'll, he'll do well over in, in Morrison, um, but, uh, there's no, there's no bad blood or anything, everything was, was fine, so. Um, and then, uh, the guys have been knocking out of the park again, um, keeping traffic to a minimum, um, as far as, uh, speeding violation, and seatbelts, all that good stuff, they've been really taking care of business out there. Um, training continues as always, um, community events, we finally had Totally Tuesday, um, just last week, we had, we had our splash day, I think it went great. Um, for anybody that was able to show up, um, everybody loved it, got the mayor in the dump tank, which was great, um, and then for, for, uh, next month, obviously, we have our national night out on August twelfth, which, uh, just coincided with Totally Tuesday again on that day. Um, next month, uh, also brings, we've been invited to the national night out for Gary and Clinton, and then we'll also probably be at the Wythe County Fair. Bridge closure, uh, hasn't been any major issues, we've had a few people trying to walk across the north bridge, so they call us to try to curtail that, um, mayor got to see that one day. And then, uh, there, there haven't been any issues with Fourth Street as far as, um, any problems other than people not getting a little lost, trying to access the, the buildings, or the businesses, I should say, but, um, no, but things going good.
Alright, thanks chief. Uh, next we have the tourism committee meeting report, um, Mark's not here this evening. I read this over, just touch on something real quick, the visitor guides are ready to be published by the Clinton Herald. Um, and then we'll have them ready for public distribution within the next month. Anyone see anything in here that stuck out to them? Alright, and then next is just the, uh, historical society report for the Martin House Museum, it looks like they just had their gas bill, they have per balance of thirty six thousand, six ninety three ninety nine.
They have per balance of thirty-six thousand, six ninety-three ninety-nine going into July. And, uh, with that, we do not have a closed session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned.